I thought you was wrong.
Okay.
Right, right.
The Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four council meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no minutes to approve, and that brings us to communications petitions and awards. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I would like the opportunity to perform the ceremonial swear in of firefighter paramedic Inspector Haley Lippincott, who began employment on April third and was with us in a part-time capacity before then. And Haley, I would just ask you to come up here, and we'll go ahead and do the swear in. There you are, hiding in the back. Testing. All right, Haley, let's go ahead. Will you please raise your right hand? I, Haley Lippincott.
I, Haley Lippincott.
solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And will obey the laws.
And obey the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Ohio.
And of the state of Ohio.
That I will, in all respects.
That I will, in all respects.
Observe the provisions.
Observe the provisions.
Of the charter.
Of the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of Vandelia.
Of the city of Vandelia.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of firefighter, paramedic inspector.
Of firefighter, paramedic inspector.
Within the Division of Fire.
Within the Division of Fire.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a proclamation for our beloved Missy Przynski. If you could join us at the podium.
We figured we'd all present this to you together.
Oh, thank you. That means so much to me.
You're so important. I gotta stand on this side. Is this on?
Well, again, thank you for all your service. I know this is a big decision in your life, and we appreciate everything you've done for us since day one that I was elected to City Council. You've always been there to support me and answer questions and help me in anything I needed. And your role is in Human Resources. I mean, you've been nothing but the utmost professional, and I appreciate you, okay?
Thank you.
Hate to see you go.
Aw, thanks.
Whereas the city of Vandelia relies on the contributions of many employees to provide the services and amenities of a top-tier community. Whereas, Missy Przynski began her employment with the city of Vandelia as a server at Castle Hills Golf Course way back in nineteen eighty-seven. And in nineteen ninety-two, Missy began full-time employment with the city of Vandelia, working in the municipal court, then the Parks and Recreation Department, and then the City Manager's Office, and most recently, serving as the Human Resource Manager. And whereas, as the Human Resource Manager, Missy has played a vital role in recruiting and hiring high-quality individuals to carry on the city's mission of providing top-tier city services to its residents. And whereas, throughout her tenure as a city employee, Missy has distinguished herself as a talented public service and as a trusted friend and coworker, building relationships that will last a lifetime. And whereas, Missy Przynski will end her distinguished career with the city of Vandelia on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Now, I therefore, Richard Herbst, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Vandelia, do by to hereby proclaim Monday, May first, two thousand twenty-four, as Missy Przynski Day.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
There you go.
Thank you.
Congratulations. We're gonna miss you so much.
Aw, thank you. I'll miss you, too.
Well, I haven't been here since the beginning, but it feels like it. In so many capacities, you've helped us just immensely. In every step that we've taken as council members, you've been there in one capacity or the other. So terribly going to miss you and don't really want you to go. So I hope you have things planned that are much more enjoyable than us.
Aw, well, Missy, I just adore you inside and out. You have just a great attitude and a heart for service, and you have done so much for the city. Just really dedicated your life to it, and we are just so proud of you. I'm proud of you. I love you so much.
Aw, thank you.
You are just such a blessing to me, so. And I adore your family, and I hope that you get to spend a lot more time with them in the coming days.
Thank you.
Missy, it seems like a lifetime.
It has been for us, hasn't it?
It has. I've known you for quite some time. And over all the years that you've been so helpful to the city, one special quality that you have that I've really admired, and that you have put yourself above others. And that's a genuine quality that I'm sure you got from your parents. And so we'll just definitely miss you, and I'll miss you and all the work that you've done for the city.
Thank you.
What's up, Missy? No, I just wanted to say.
What can you not know about Missy D?
Missy, I think, is one of those Vandia employees that, and there are several in the organization, but as someone who grew up in the community, started working in the community or for the city in a part-time status, and has turned a career into public service. And I think there are several in the organization, but Missy's kind of the example that others are following. And I, like Vice Mayor Blakesley said, a lot of that, you know, she comes from a family of public service, with her mom's service in the police division for years, her husband in public safety as well in a rival city. But I think it has a lot to say about you as a person that you've dedicated over thirty years of public service to our community and as an elected official because you just wanted to have some fun on the side. So congratulations, best of luck in retirement, you and your family. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Cory. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Sure.
Do you want to talk there?
Sure. Like you all said, I do love public service, and I am going to still be around in another capacity, and we'll still be working together, and I'll still be able to help, you know, the community, be a top-tier community and a premier community in this region. That's what we all do here in Vandelia. We're good at it. Actually, we're great at it, and that's part of what makes our staff special. We're all very close, and I believe that the Vandelia, city of Vandelia employees probably coined the phrase "family work family," you know, because we are all so close, and we drop everything to help the other person be successful and to serve our community. And that's what we do here, and that's why it's such a great place to live, work, and play. So thank you all for your kind words. These have been the best years of my life, serving this community and working alongside all of these professionals. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the entertainment for tonight. No, I'm just kidding, but this is an open meeting, so everyone's welcome to stay, but we are going to transition into city business if anybody would like to go out. Do you want me to go grab Emma? Are you sure? Okay.
Thank you guys. I have loved every minute of it.
Thank you.
We've loved every minute of working with you, too. I'm sure we'll find you around here somewhere. All right, moving on, we have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if anyone would like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being none, we'll move on to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Went.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. One thing that I put in my weekly update, Mrs. Przynski's retirement party slash open house is Thursday, April twenty-fifth, from one to four P.M. at the Vandelia Senior Center. And so you are all welcome to attend that and encouraged to. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Public Works Superintendent Wally Ritchie, who announced his retirement. We're all very excited for Assistant Public Works Superintendent Mr. Jake Haislett to take over. He's certainly earned that appointment in that position and has done an exceptional job. In regard to Mr. Ritchie's accomplishments, in addition to introducing modern construction practices, implementing the vac truck slash jetter, and then the hot box asphalt recycler to reduce funds and improve the way we do our patching. We've got full staff down there minus the office assistant, but full-time public works and mechanic staff is full down there. Everybody's got CDLs with their tanker endorsement, and of course, we've settled that contract with Mr. Ritchie being there. I'd like to compliment Chief Folic, Chief Althaus regarding, and the rest of our team, really, Director Borton, our whole senior staff, the I.T. Division, regarding the implementation of the Emergency Operations Center. I know that the eclipse with traffic and congestion had Y-two-K feelings after the fact, but this was really good for our staff. We started preparing contingencies late last year, and so we stood that up, and we were ready if something were to happen, and of course, we're thankful that it did not. And so thank you for everybody for that. On Thursday, this Thursday, the eighteenth, Assistant City Manager Rob Cron will be speaking at the ODOT construction kickoff for the, not just the Vandelia Bike Way Connector, but also for ODOT's seasonal projects. That takes place at ten A.M. at the Taylorsville Dam. There's limited parking, and so if you're able to carpool, they've encouraged us to encourage folks to do that. If it rains, we'll be at three hundred Smith Road in Clayton as the alternate. This Wednesday, April seventeenth, five P.M., we'll meet in the Justice Center Community Room to kick off our strategic visioning retreat. Also, the Arbor Day event is coming, which is April twenty-sixth at one P.M. That'll take place at Helkey Park. Vice Mayor Blakesley will present a proclamation and will plant a tree, which is an American hop hornbeam. Finally, May second is the National Day of Prayer. That'll be at the First Light Church, and I've listed the times in that packet. This, I, one other thing, I guess, that's not on the agenda tonight that I'll bring up. We received a correspondence from the city of Dayton. That's because we are a potential customer with our lateral tie-ins to Dayton's system regarding the polyfluoral alkali substances, PFOS. And what I wanted to make clear is, the city of Dayton has indicated their intent to work towards meeting the new requirements that came out from the U.S. EPA, which begs the question, what is the city of Vandelia, what is TIP City and the Northern Area Water Authority doing for our residents? The confirmation that I've received from our water quality reports that we're required to do and our licensed operators who are associated with Nawa is that there are not detectable levels in the Great Miami buried aquifer where we draw our water. So we don't draw from the surface like some other utilities, and so there's no real action needed on our part at this time, but I just wanted to make sure that you understood as that letter came out, if you had a question or were asked by a resident, what is the city of Vandelia doing? Our water comes from wells that are in the aquifer, and so they don't have detectable levels of PFOS in them. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the evening, that being Resolution twenty-four R dash twenty-six. Mr. McDonald, by title only.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Med account management, Inc. to perform emergency medical service billing services to the Division of Fire and EMS.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
I'm sorry I'm so emotional about it. The Division of Fire completed its EMS billing request for proposal, the RFP process, Friday, March twenty-ninth. We gave a primer on this, Chief Folic did at our last meeting. We sent out thirteen RFP packets. We received six back. One of the, one packet was deemed to be unresponsive. It arrived on April first, and so that was discarded. Staff reviewed the proposals and met with the best respondent. I'm recommending, along with the Division of Fire, that the city council authorize the city manager to enter into a business associate agreement with Med account management, Inc. of Cincinnati, Ohio. Med accounts charge for this service is equivalent to five point six percent of net monthly revenue for a period of five years. According to Chief Folic, that is within the acceptable industry standard for soft billing. Med account is ready to begin working with the Division of Fire immediately to get the contract reviewed and signed, to onboard us as a client to complete our Medicare, Medicaid verifications, and to train our personnel. The goal would be to return to EMS billing services within the next thirty to sixty days. The city has not sent out an EMS bill since early February due to non-performance by the prior contractor. Med account has agreed to assist us with billing these aging EMS calls. Med account has a well-established reputation with several local clients and has been in the business for nearly thirty years, per Chief Folic. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-four R twenty-six.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-six as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-seven.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with A to Z Asphalt of Vandelia, Ohio, for the Helkey Park Sports Court Maintenance Project in an amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. Give me a second here to catch up. Thank you. Parks and Recreation Department is recommending awarding the bid for the Helkey Park Sport Maintenance project to A to Z Asphalt from the Vandelia at a price of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. On March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, we publicly opened and read proposals received for the project advertised in the Daily Court Reporter on March eighth and March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Three companies requested the bid specifications with only A to Z Asphalt submitting a formal bid proposal for the project. The project includes repairs and resurfacing of six tennis courts and eight pickleball courts. The two thousand twenty-four CIP Capital Improvement Plan budget has fifty-five thousand dollars allotted for this project based on a price quote received during our budget preparation process. The total bid amount submitted by A to Z Asphalt for this project is eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars. That's sixty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy for tennis court repairs, twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for pickleball court repairs. As a result of the joint facility use agreement with the Vandelia Butler Board of Education, the cost of repair and maintenance work for the tennis courts will be shared equally, and costs for the pickleball court repairs are the sole responsibility of the city. Based on the agreement of the cost for the project, it will be as follows. City of Vandelia, fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. Vandelia Butler City School District, thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. The Vandelia Butler Schools will be invoiced separately for their portion of the cost. We are recommending the balance of the funds, the three thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, come from current balances in the capital project budget for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-four R twenty-seven as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Folic and a second by Vice Mayor Blakesley to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-seven. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion passes six-zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-eight.
Sorry? A resolution awarding the bid and authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Muffler Brothers for vehicle maintenance and mechanical services for police vehicles.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. On February twenty-sixth, representatives with the Division of Police opened and read aloud two bids received to perform vehicle maintenance and mechanical service on the police division's fleet. These bids were received from Muffler Brothers and Excel Automotive and Tire. The bids had the proper tax affidavit and forms. Excel Automotive Tire and Tire offers the, offered the lowest bid on most maintenance and common vehicle services, such as oil changes and tire rotation, while Muffler Brothers offers these same services at a slightly higher price. The big contract is for two years with the possibility of a two-year extension. Excel Automotive has been the contracted vehicle maintenance provider for VPD for the past four years and has provided adequate service during the contract period. However, there have been multiple times in the renewal period where the division vehicles were dropped off in the morning and not serviced until later in the day, causing evening shift officers to have to pick them up after hours. The division has had several larger mechanical issues beyond normal maintenance where the cost for repairs were much higher at Excel than at other local repair shops. Additionally, over the past year, Excel has had several instances where they were in violation of city property ordinances and on the storage and parking of vehicles, as well as exterior maintenance issues on their site. The division has also, the Division of Fire has also noted that Excel Automotive stores flammable and combustible materials in violation of the fire codes. Due to these violations and issues, the Division of Police is recommending that city council award the two-year contract to Muffler Brothers, a local repair shop, for vehicle maintenance and mechanical repairs with the police division's vehicles, not to exceed forty thousand dollars per year with the possibility for renewal for an additional two-year period.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-eight as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-eight as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-nine. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution authorizing the law director to register an objection to a liquor permit renewal and request a hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Went.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Ohio revised code permits the city to object to the renewal of a liquor permit and request a hearing with liquor control if one or more of the statutory grounds for objecting to the renewal is present. The former Oscars Bar at three twenty North Dixie Drive sustained smoke and fire and structural damage in December, two thousand twenty-two. It has been uninhabitable since the fire, and there are no utility services to the structure. The city condemned the building on January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and no appeal was filed nor repairs made. The law director and chief building official have recommended that the city object to the renewal of the liquor permit as the premises does not conform to the building's safety, building's safety or health requirements of the city, which is one of the grounds for denial of a liquor permit under Ohio revised code four-three-zero-three dot two-nine-two-A-two.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we accept Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-nine. Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dugan and a second by Councilman Folic to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash twenty-nine as presented. Are there any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakesley?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst?
Yes, and the motion carries six-zero. Next, we have Resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty.
A resolution authorizing additional cooperation with the Ohio Department of Transportation regarding improvements to Webster Street from Stop Eight Road to Little York Road, being PID number one-one-six-eight-eight-zero.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. Assistant City Manager Rob Cron gave a presentation in the earlier meeting today. The city of Vandelia and the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, have previously agreed to partner in the resurfacing of Webster Street from Stop Eight to Little York Road. Final plans have been approved by ODOT, and the bids were opened on April fourth, two thousand twenty-four. We received federal surface transportation program funding through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission for eighty percent of the project in an amount up to seven hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Based on the estimated cost of the project, the city previously paid ODOT one hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred dollars for the local estimated share. Bids for the project came in higher than estimated by ODOT, and those bids were shared earlier tonight. I believe they're included in your packet. Per the contract with ODOT, the city is responsible for a hundred percent of the costs over the, over the grant amount of seven hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Our additional cost to move the project forward and to allow ODOT to award the contract is one hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars. This brings our total share to three hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is thirty... three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars, which is thirty-three-point-two-seven percent of the total project cost. To continue the project and to receive grant funding, it is necessary for the city council to consider this change and to approve a supplemental appropriation in the same, same evening. This is something that staff never wants to do and tries to avoid whenever possible. Staff previously requested that ODOT delay the approval process. However, this request was rejected by ODOT. In twenty-twenty-one, the City of Vandelia applied for STP funds for the first time and designated Webster Street because the need to resurface the street aligned with the funding timeline and our capital plan. Although the increase in cost is less than desirable, the city has the funds available in the Safe and Stable Fund, and further, I recommend approval because the city will be able to perform a needed one-million-seventy-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-dollar paving project for three-hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand five hundred and forty-nine local dollars.
Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution twenty-four R thirty as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve Resolution twenty-four dash R dash thirty. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. We have one ordinance in the first reading, that being Ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending the text of the Vandelia Zoning Code relating to signs in the Vandelia City Center overlay.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, included in the packet is a memorandum from city planner Hammett recommending amendments to Chapter one-two-two-zero of the Vandelia Zoning Code. The proposed amendments would create exceptions for existing non-conforming signs in the Vandelia City Center overlay. This request was initiated by staff after discussion and recommendation for application by the Vandelia City Council. On March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the proposed amendments.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Dugan to approve Ordinance twenty-four dash zero eight in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. We have no ordinances in their second reading. However, we do have a couple emergency ordinances, the first one being Ordinance twenty-four dash zero six. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance to revise appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Vandelia, Montgomery County, Ohio during the calendar year ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four, and amending Ordinance twenty-three dash twenty-eight and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. This ordinance relates directly to Resolution twenty-four R dash thirty that I just presented on. This is a supplemental of one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars in the safest, Safe and Stable Fund to increase appropriations to account for expenses relating, related to the additional amount due to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the Webster Street resurfacing project.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll prove to, I'll move to approve Ordinance twenty-four zero six as an emergency.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilwoman Avalotis Weaver to approve Ordinance twenty-four dash zero six as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes six zero. Next we have Emergency Ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven.
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the finance director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. This emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash collection, delinquents, sewer and water, weed cutting, and property maintenance.
Since this is a emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Vice Mayor Blakeslee to approve Ordinance twenty-four dash zero seven as an emergency. Are there any comments?
Has, has this increased the, the amount of delinquent accounts at all since the raises in the water and sewer we've had?
How about we go ahead and we compile that data going back for that, and then we'll give you a report of that?
Yeah, that would be good. I'd like to see somewhere along the line if we can try to ease some of this for people who are on fixed incomes and disabilities sometime perhaps.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero. We'll move on to reports from boards and commissions. The first item is a side yard setback variance at thirteen-thirty-three Helkey Road. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant, Mr. Matthew Beam, has requested a variance to allow a six-hundred, that's a sixteen-hundred square foot, that's fifteen by forty, addition to his house that does not meet the minimum twenty-foot side yard setback requirement for the property located at one-three-three-three Helkey Road. The applicant has proposed adding an addition to his house that would have a fifteen-foot side yard setback. On March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, the Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Oh, we're not voting on this. Are we?
Yes.
Your Honor, I'll move to approve BZA twenty-four zero five, the side yard setback at thirteen-thirty-three Helkey Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve the side yard setback as described. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes, sorry.
That's all right. Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't hear you call my name, sorry. I was being distracted. All right, let's move on to the Hotel Motel at thirty-six seventy-five Weiss Road. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. Enclosed is a memorandum from Mr. Hammett, the city planner, wherein Greg Moaning of Woolport, Inc., on behalf of Choice Hotels International, Inc., has submitted an application requesting conditional use approval for the property located at three-six-seven-five Weiss Road. The applicant seeks to construct a hotel on the property. Hotels are a conditional use in the Office Industrial Park or OIP district. On March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval with conditions, and I have these conditions on the screen and in the packet. The first condition, no hotel shall commence on the subject property unless and until the operator of that use completes all required registrations and compliances with all prerequisites thereof found in Chapter eight-seven-eight of the Vandelia Codified Ordinance, including but not limited to regular attendance at the required quarterly meetings established under that ordinance. All parcels upon which the proposed conditional use shall be conduct, shall be conduct, shall be conducted must be consolidated before any building permit is issued for the site. All required roadway improvements shall be completed to the standards of and under the supervision of the Director of Public Service, and all required landscaping shall be installed to the standards of Chapter one-two-three-two on landscaping and screening standards.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I will make a motion, sorry.
Oh, I move that we deny PC twenty-four dash zero one on the reasoning that using the conditional use review, it does not meet the criteria as one, two, or three.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fairst and a second by Councilwoman Avalotis Weaver to deny the variance at thirty-six seventy-five Weiss Road. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
No.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
No.
Mayor Herbs?
No, and the motion passes to deny the variance five-one.
No.
Three. Four-three?
Three or three.
Three.
Yes, or did you vote to pass it or not?
So the motion to deny it fails.
And I said yes, didn't I?
You said no.
Okay, I misspoke. I'm sorry about that.
So you said, so four yes.
Um, well, there was a motion to deny. We should have a motion to approve to see how that one would go if somebody wanted to make that motion. Because all we did is the motion to deny did not pass, so we're in a limbo right now.
Wait a minute.
If I may clarify.
We had four that said deny.
Yes.
Because Richard meant to say yes.
So it would be.
Okay, now I'm confused. I have you down as a no.
Richard said yes.
Retract your no to make.
He did vote no. He voted no the first time.
Right.
That is correct.
And then he retracted.
Okay, so we have four votes to deny.
Four votes to deny.
Then I'm happy.
Who voted for it?
The motion to deny passes.
We're good to move forward? Okay. Council, you've had an opportunity to review the civil service meeting minutes of February twenty-first, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting minutes of March twenty-seventh, the Planning Commission meeting minutes of March twenty-sixth. Are there any comments? All right, next we have the March twenty-twenty-four bill listing in the amount of two million nine-hundred-and-thirty-thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. The monthly expenses over twenty-five thousand, and the purchase card detail in the amount of thirty-four thousand four-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and thirty-two cents. All right, and that brings us to council comments, and we'll begin this evening with Mr. McDonald. Mr. Went?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would first like to say congratulations to Captain Anthony Miller on passing the Ohio Fire Executives Course, and that's a really big deal. Very proud of him doing that and putting forth that extra effort. I've heard people compare that to a master's degree with its amount of rigor. Also, I'd like to say congratulations to Human Resources Manager, Missy Prasinski. She's been outstanding to have in the city manager's office, first in the executive assistant and deputy clerk of council role, and then also as the human resources manager. I, I do feel like she has been our ambassador of culture for our organization and has been an exceptional leader. I will also say that as city manager, it's been very nice being able to work with her in a way and knowing that when she is needed to express the way that she feels about policy options inside of the organization, she has led with our heart, her heart, and in a way that's been in the best service to our employees and to our organization. And so I'm thankful for her thirty-seven combined years of service, and I will miss working with her. That's all my comments.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes, I just wanted to give a shout out to Chief Alt House for joining us this past weekend, or weekend before last. We had a whole bunch of area chiefs, and we did invite, we did invite Chief Follak, but he was, he was unable to attend. We had a Hopping in the Heights event with our nonprofit, and they all took some kids shopping on a hundred-dollar shopping spree, and he did a great job, and we were really thankful that he agreed to volunteer his time. And I wanted to remind everybody, so you have time to plan, that National Police Week is May twelfth through the eighteenth, so that you can spend some time thinking on gifts to appreciate our police officers, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fairst?
I would like to excuse Councilmember David Lewis from all meetings this evening.
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotis Weaver?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion passes six zero.
Other than that, I have nothing this evening. Thank you, though.
All right, Councilman Follak?
Just to echo the city manager's remarks about Mrs. Prasinski's retirement, but also congratulations to Public Works Superintendent Wally Ritchie on his retirement and Mr. Jake Hazlitt's promotion to the Public Work Superintendent position. Mr. Hazlitt's another example of a Vandelia, longtime Vandelia resident and graduate of Butler High School who has remained here in the community and moving up in the organization. Also, congratulations to Fire Captain Anthony Miller on his OFE credentialing, and to Lieutenant Zach Holbrook on his promotion to Fire Lieutenant. I also wanted to take a minute to thank the residents of both Clyde Place and Cyril Court. They've endured a, a very long road construction project over the, started in the fall and went on pause during the winter months because of weather and, and contractors don't work during the winter, and we did as much as we could in the fall, so I know it was a very lengthy project, but the end result, I think, is worth it. They've got brand-new water sewer mains, sidewalks, street curbs, and asphalt, so thank you for their patience with that project. And then lastly, just to recognize, this week is the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, so recognizing our public safety dispatchers who are the first voice that many of our residents hear when they call nine-one-one, but this is their week of recognition, so I'd like to recognize those nine individuals that work as public safety specialists within the Division of Police. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Dugan?
I know that Mayor Herbs does not like to be in the limelight, but I think he should be congratulated for being appointed to the Board of Directors of the Montgomery County Convention Facilities Authority. I had to read that.
Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to serving on that board. I had my orientation a couple of weeks ago, and it's a fascinating job what they're doing with the convention center right now. So if you haven't been down to see the renovations, I highly encourage it. It's, it's, it's going to be wonderful. Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Well, to echo everything that others have said about Missy Prasinski, she's been a great asset, and congratulations to her on her next chapter in life. Really, to get a chance to say that earlier, and she's been an unsung hero. I think we've all acknowledged that all the good work she has done and certainly will be missed. That's all I have. Thank you.
The only other comment I would make is, like Vice Mayor Blakeslee just mentioned, Missy Prasinski means a lot to this organization, and she's really going to be missed. It's going to be tough to replace her. We all appreciate everything that she's done over the years for everyone. She was always willing to go out of her way to help anyone that had a question, no matter how big or small the problem was. She was, she was there to help. She was a true public servant, and I really appreciate her. All right, this time we're going to go back to our study session where we have a couple of items we need to finish up, and then council will go into executive session. All right, we'll start with the March twenty-twenty-four financial reports. Ms. Leiter? Ms. Leiter?
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to see how this goes. Okay, beginning with the general fund revenues, overall, income tax receipts are up year-to-date just about 4%, so it's about $200,000 in actual dollars over March of last year. Withholding taxes up about 5%, so that is staying strong and has continued so far, which is a good sign. So overall, what we have collected versus what we had budgeted is about 7.5%. What we've collected, we budgeted six, so we're still over, and the 7.5% is just basically what we budgeted over last year's budget, so the actual dollars coming in are even more still. So we're going to level out a little bit and hopefully continue to jump ahead, so I do think that our estimate of 6% being a little higher than what we have traditionally budgeted, I think we're going to be closer at the end of the year, but still hope, you know, that, and I still believe that we're still going to be over that in actual dollars, so I think it's still, you know, really good news, but it does show, especially as we enter, I can't believe in just a few months, we're going to start looking at personnel for budget for '25, but it does kind of give us a picture of what, where we're going from here and how to continue to budget, so. In expenditures, in general fund, I just wanted to mention, the transfers out are up a little bit. Part of that is just because of our income taxes are up, but also there was a 2024 capital improvement transfer that was made, and that was just an anticipation and to accommodate the Bike Way Path project payment that we had. So we just, we had that amount budgeted, I just, it's basically timing, I just went ahead and made the, the transfer earlier in the year so that way we could keep enough funds in that capital improvement fund for, for other purchases for other departments. I think we can go on to police-fire. Stop me if you have any questions, or if you can't understand me. The police-fire street and the revenues, the other revenues are up mostly on this amount. It's just, if you recall from the flood we had, the insurance reimbursements, we're starting to receive those, so we have a little, it's going to skew the amounts a little bit throughout this year, but I just wanted to mention, we are starting to get it and put it back into the funds is where we actually expensed those, those various equipment and whatnot that was damaged. And then, of course, conversely, on the revenue side, or on the continuing with the revenue side with the police-fire and street, the transfers in are increased because of the income tax revenue being up. Now, the expenditures in the police-fire and street, the fire personnel, and I know we kind of talked about all this already, it's going to look a little bit weird for another couple of months because it's going to show in '24 the expenditures, and that's your blue column over to the right versus the blue column over to the left, you'll see the fire is zero. That's only because we started taking the, the fire lieutenants out in June of last year, so it's going to be a little weird for a couple more months. Okay, moving on to golf. The revenues so far are up year-to-date, so we, it was a little different this time last month, but it, we did have a little better month in March, so we're starting to see those turn, so hopefully, today was a beautiful day, the weekend was, so hopefully we're going to start seeing that continue to trend, and we'll keep the revenues going up. Equally as much, the expenditures were down, so you can go, I'm sorry. So water, the revenues are up, expenditures are down, capital purchases are off a little bit, both in water and sewer, and that's just the water meters that we had purchased, and that's just timing, because we'll be purchasing those again in '24. Sewer, the same way, the revenues are up, the expenditures are down, except for capital. Well, capital's down, but it's a timing. Okay, so moving on to cost recovery. For golf courses, we're at about 34% through the end of March versus '26 last year, and that's even, that, as you can see, we purchased some capital, 13,500 to far right column up to the top, but we did, and we had not at this time last year, so carrying that 34% so far is, is, is very good news, so. And you can see where the operating expenditures are down too from last year, so that's good news. Rec center, we're operating at about a 64 versus 63 last year, and you can see along that line there, when the 60s, it's, it's fairly consistent, so at the bottom, and, and that's even with the capital purchases being varying degrees. This year so far, year-to-date in March, was approximately the same as what we had purchased last year. So this is very similar where, you know, that we landed or where we were so far last year. And of course, caps, I cannot believe Castle Hills Pool's going to be open here soon. It's very hard to believe how fast this year's going, so we'll start having some statistics here in the next couple of months on that. And finally, on the fund statement, really nothing to report except for going about 60% of the way down the page, that is Fund 332, Police Fire Street, so on the far right column down, you'll see it is showing a deficit of about $16,000. That is just strictly timing. We've got some expenses coming out, you know, just front-loaded versus, you know, at the tail end of the, of the year, so you'll kind of see that on and off, but at the end of the year, it'll right itself. If there's any issues, we'll, we'll definitely go over it. Little bit farther down, the OPWC Fund 340, that is showing a deficit of $380,000. Again, that's timing, we're going to be expecting some reimbursements. And finally, the last Fund 872, Hospital Care, and that's showing the deficit of $161,000, and that is purely timing, and that's just encumbrances setting up to prepare for payment. So nothing to be alarmed, no claim issues or anything like that. The only thing I would like to add is our purchasing cards. Every quarter, I'd like to update you on that, and as of the end of March or the first quarter, we still have 46 employees that have a purchasing card. We have not added any or deleted any, we've just stayed the same since the last end of the month in December of '23. Nothing to report. The balance is basically zero because we pay that every single month off, so. Any questions, concerns?
No, I think we're good, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, and lastly, we have the legislative update. Is there anything, anyone has any comments or questions on coming up legislatively in the next 60 days?
I would just advise, I had a conversation with Councilmember Dugan regarding property maintenance issue relating to the storage of trailers. We've done an analysis, as we had, as we had spoken before internally, and we're looking at some language. I do anticipate that we will come to the next study session with proposed language to see if this is something council would like to move forward with that would require an application on the part of the city to amend the zoning code and then require us to go to Planning Commission and go through that process, so just to, just to set those expectations, it would go to Planning Commission, it would come back from Planning Commission, we would bring it to a study session, and then there would be two readings, so, and then 30 days to be active, and so it'll be a little bit of a lengthy process, but I do think at the May 6 meeting, we should have some item for you to consider. I'd also point out that with that, we go down in the summer sessions to one meeting a month, and so that tends to delay that as well in, in affecting it, so I just want to make you aware of that timeline.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions coming up? All right, it's recommended to council, I'm sorry?
We just need to adjourn out of the study session, which we don't need any formal action for, but to go back into the regular session for, for this executive session, we just need a motion and then, yeah, or no vote to go back into the regular session.
All right, can I have a motion to go back into the regular session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, it's recommended to council enter into executive session to discuss with the city attorney pending or imminent litigation. Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Folick and a second by Councilwoman Fairst. Call the roll.
Councilmember Folick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Avalotus Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blakeslee?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries six zero.